Open at nine thirty nine a m. On the twenty seventh of June, twenty twenty four. And this is my first special budget meeting. I'm looking forward to seeing how this progresses. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the Kwananda Mooka people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. I would also like to pay respect to those elders past, present and emerging. And extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians who are present. I would like to remind all that are in this meeting that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as being livestreamed online. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does for state and federal parliamentarians. And you are reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments which you make, may make during the course of this meeting. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking. And for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually, please use the mute button when not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors on your left and down the stairwell to exit onto Bloomfield Street. I would also, at this time, like to remind councillors of standing orders. In particular, sections related to respect and not speaking over the top of your fellow colleagues. All members of the public present at the meeting must, A, not without the prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio or video recording or take any photographs, B, remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, C, not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any persons present, D, be suitably dressed and E, turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, with or without such warning, require the person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson decides. This period may include future meetings. Moving to agenda item number two, leave of absence. I've not been advised of any leave of absence. I would now like to remind councillors to sign the attendance sheet for today's special budget meeting, which can be found in Diligent Boards. This must be completed before the meeting concludes. Moving on to agenda item number three, which is declaration of prescribed conflict of interests and declarable conflict of interests. Councillors are reminded of their responsibilities in relation to a councillor's prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interest in a meeting. Details of these responsibilities are also outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting before statutory meeting of council. These declarations can also be made at any time throughout the meeting. Just a reminder that under section one hundred and fifty EF of the Act, the conflicts of interest provisions do not apply for ordinary business matters solely relating to the making or levying of rates and charges or the adoption of a budget, and we have none advised at this stage. Moving on to agenda item number four, and I will now make my budget address. So, the budget, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Today, councillors, we will collectively vote to determine a hundred and forty four million dollar budget for the Redlands Coast. The Redlands Community elected council. The Redlands Community elected council operates as a board and councillors, as councillors, we've put up our hands to perform a job for our community and we're here to consult, set a strategic direction, deliberate and make decisions. Budget preparations for this budget began in November twenty twenty three during the last term, eight months ago. And the newly elected council commenced in April twenty twenty four, about two and a half months ago. And we've had a period of about two months for consideration of the budget with weekly workshops and meetings. And during development, this budget was running at the previous current, the previous Redland Blended CPI. It has quite obviously not been possible to address all of the issues we would like to address in the time that has been available for consideration. And I do note that some of the issues have been longstanding. This compressed timeframe is due to when the election was set and its proximity to the legislative requirement for councils prepare its new annual budget. Alternatively, if an election was held in October, it would allow a new council to be part of the complete budget development process and not just the final few months. The difficulties with the compressed timeframe are, as I've already mentioned, that it is impossible to come up to speed with a multitude of services and projects and to look at everything that we'd like to consider or amend in our very first year. However, we've done the very best that we can with the help of an amazing team. Last year's published financial forecast listed a projected twenty twenty four, twenty five minimum general rate increase of nearly six percent. And since that time, we have seen massive increases in goods and services. We have also recently seen our Redland property valuations increase on average over thirty one percent. And during my campaign, I said that I wanted to work for our community citing a number of issues. And two of them were that I'd like transparency and building upon what council has already done, information for the community and that I wanted value to see value for our rates. It's not a reflection on what existed previously, that's just a statement for the campaign. And I have learned a great deal about our rates and the unique impacts that we face over the last two months and I'll learn a lot more in the coming years. Here are some important facts that set the context of budgetary impacts to our city, which include we have predominantly low density residential suburbs, including six residential island communities. There is no other Queensland council servicing that number of islands. We have our own water business delivering drinking water to sixty four thousand households and sewer services of fifty five thousand to fifty five thousand homes every single day. We don't have open landfills, which means we must truck all of our waste to other cities and also manage the legacy of the environmental impacts of twenty eight closed former landfills. We have lower growth than our neighbouring cities, meaning we don't have a growing rate payer base to help share the increased costs of delivering services to our community. And we have three hundred and thirty five kilometres of coastline and four thousand nine hundred hectares of conservation and green spaces that make our city a unique place to live. The above, all leads to our unique city having a unique budget need. A balance between servicing our needs, the growth that we do have and protecting why we all chose to live here in the first place. This budget delivers for our community while also enabling councils to continue building for future Redland generations with a commitment to capital expenditure program. There is also funding to ensure our environment is preserved, our wildlife is looked after and Redlands Coast remains the integally natural landscape of South East Queensland. This budget reflects the economic climate of today and council's commitment to work smarter. I have been advised that through this budget, council has identified more than thirteen million dollars in budgeted efficiencies. And I am assured that these significant organisation wide savings will not be at the detriment of services to rate payers and we will continue the commitment to manage resources in effective and efficient way. I am also assured that the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget is built on the pillars of value for money, protecting, enhancing our city's lifestyle, responsible spending and efficiency. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about the financial position of council. So deliberations during the budget development phase were framed around the need for council to ensure it was making responsible and sustainable financial decisions that respected the challenging economic conditions currently facing our city and our broader community. There have been, there's never been a more important time to make every single dollar of public monies go further. And we're all feeling the effects of that, filling up our cars, going to the shops every day and buying our groceries. We can, we can see it happening right in front of us. It not only affects all of our members, the members of our community, it also affects the function of council. Our community is feeling the weight of the cost of living in multiple areas, as I just said, at the petrol bouncer, in our electricity bills and when doing our weekly shop. Council is also not immune to these pressures with the cost of fuel, electricity and building materials all rising substantially in the past twelve months and dramatically affecting council's bottom line. There has also been a sharp increase in waste costs across the past year owing to the planned and phased reduction of state government waste, the state government race, waste rebate and an increase to the waste levy imposed by councils, imposed on councils. While these changes have been known and well intentioned and designed to reduce the amount of waste being sent to landfill, it places significant pressure on council with the city's waste bill expected to rise substantially unless the community commits to reducing their household waste. This is reassuring news for our community and holds us in good stead into what is likely to be another year of economic uncertainty. I'm now going to outline some of the highlights around this budget. So this is, this is really good news from our budget. And the highlights for this year's budget from a cost of living standpoint include the continuation of pensioner rebates, funding for council's community grants programs and keeping the city waste and recycling centers free for all residents. Council recognizes the cost of living pressures faced by the community and has adopted a one point four seven million operating deficit by limiting the increase to the minimum general rate. From a value for money perspective, this is significant, there is significant investment in footpath upgrades, island road sealing, local parks, wastewater, wastewater infrastructure and active transport. Council will also once again support a range of environment, community and creative arts events and also NADOC celebrations. We have responsibly managed our infrastructure charges to support the growth, sustainability and quality of life in our community by ensuring that essential infrastructure is well maintained and capable of meeting current and future demands. To this end, council will hold ninety million dollars in reserve to fund infrastructure that is vital for community development. Council's cash balance, which is very healthy, will generate more than thirteen million dollars in interest revenue, which helps offset the rising costs of service delivery. And now for some more details. This budget also includes the delivery of a targeted capital expenditure program valued at more than a hundred and eighteen million dollars. And you'll see also in the information provided to the community on council's website and the information that's rolled out that there's even increased information for community to view in relation to that. The largest allocation is almost thirty two million dollars for essential water, wastewater and waste products, projects to ensure we maintain our high standard of service delivery to our community. This includes three point two million for the Kinross Road Thornlands Sewage Trunk Line as well as two point nine million for remediation work at Judy Holt Recreation Reserve in Berkdale. Council's alliance with Logan and Ipswich City Councils to develop a material recovery facility working towards a sustainable local circular economy has a budget allocation to enable work to progress. Almost half of the full capital expenditure program, or fifty two point five seven million, has been allocated to the combined areas of roads and infrastructure, which includes six point nine two million investment in the continuation of the Wellington Street Panorama Drive duplication project at Thornlands. And I'm sure many people will be looking forward to seeing the opening of that section. Road reseals, reconstruction and upgrades across the city represent thirty million dollars. To put the capital expenditure on transport and roads into perspective, council manages and maintains more than thirteen hundred kilometres of roads and almost seven hundred kilometres of footpath, cycleways, paths, tracks and trails. We are responsible for about a hundred and thirty four bridges, almost seven hundred bus stops, two hundred car parks and close to six hundred and eighty kilometres of stormwater pipes. Council is also responsible for three hundred and thirty five kilometres of coastline on Redlands Coast. And this poses a significant financial challenge greater than other councils in our region. They do not face the same. In two, in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, it also includes four point four nine million dollars in capital spending on marine and foreshore projects to further enhance our glorious coastlines, including canal and breakwater works. Infrastructure projects such as transport, building and stormwater represent thirty two, uh, twenty three million dollars. This includes more than nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars to fund the next stage of Berkdale Community Precinct at Berkdale and five point six five million dollars for advancing the Wyunam Creek Priority Development Area in Redland Bay. We have seventeen point six nine million dollars to spend on local parks, open space and conservation and a further four point five four million dollars has been allocated for community and cultural development. The expenditure includes three million dollars for continued refurbishment of the Redlands Performing Arts Centre that will enable us to continue bringing wonderful acts to our Redlands Coast while also supporting local artists and performers. There is also an addition, there is also additional funding for the continuation of our popular arts and library programs. The budget also allocates one point zero four million dollars for the Cleveland Library building renewal. Council also supports some seventy sports and recreation groups and this budget continues that strong commitment to sport. It includes seven point six million for the development of the Redlands Coast Regional Sport and Recreation Precinct at Heineman Road. Mount Cotton, there is one million dollars for the, for sports field lighting at Redland Softball Park in Sheldon and one point eight one million for upgrades to the Pinklands Sporting Complex netball facilities in Thornlands. And moving on to specific information around our bay islands. This budget includes targeted funding for our four island communities that make up the southern Moreton Bay Islands as well as North Stradbroke Island and Coochie Mudlow Island. And I'll outline the following. These communities contribute not only to the local economy, but they are also an important part of both the human and environmental identity of our Redlands Coast. Our islands will benefit in total from a seven point two million dollar investment in infrastructure, which includes road upgrades, foreshore protection and a new community building for McClay Island. More than three quarters of this spend will be on the southern Moreton Bay Islands. This includes three million dollars for green sealing of roads on these islands, taking the total spend on the green sealing program that began in two thousand and sixteen to well in excess of twenty two million dollars. There is more than nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to be used for foreshore protection on McClay and Russell Islands and Coochie Mudlow has two hundred and twenty thousand dollars allocated for a footpath extension and car park and drainage improvements at the ferry terminal. Manjeraba will benefit from a, with a range of allocations for road, footpath, swimming enclosure and sewage upgrades, including four hundred thousand dollars for works at Point Lookout Sewage Pump Station. Digital transformation. In response to the challenging community expectations, council has commenced a digital transformation program that is designed to improve how council delivers its services. And over the next four to seven years, the program will drive efficiencies within the organization and make it easier for our community to access council's suite of digital services. Six million dollars has been allocated to the initiative in the budget, which will allow for the program's rollout to continue and more improvements to be implemented that will benefit residents, elected representatives and council staff. The program will ensure our digital systems remain robust and secure in the face of increasing cybersecurity threats to many businesses and government entities. Protecting our community's private data is a cornerstone goal for the digital transformation program. And now I'm going to speak to specific rate information. So residents across Redland City local government area have seen their land valuations increase on average by more than thirty one percent since valuations were last issued in twenty twenty two. And we've recently all received advice in relation to that. And councillors had to mitigate that significant increase in valuations in order to keep rate rises as low as possible. Despite the valuation jump and a range of external cost pressures currently impact council's bottom line, the increase in the minimum general rate has been limited to five point five one percent this year. This is an improvement on last year's forecast of nearly six percent. This means a rate payer in category one A owner occupied property with a median valuation will pay an additional three hu, three dollars ninety two per week in total rates and charges, excluding state government charges such as bulk water and emergency management levy. The general rate, the largest portion of your council rate bill, is also used for the upkeep of more than three point four billion in public assets such as car parks, boat ramps, street lighting, playgrounds and other public amenities. Rates revenue is vital to the running of the city and is put towards some of the much loved facilities, which include our libraries, galleries, the Redlands Performing Arts Centre and Indigiscapes. More than twenty percent of Redland City's population, population is aged over sixty five years of age, which is higher than Greater Brisbane with fourteen point eight percent and Queensland with seventeen percent and the country with seventeen point two percent. So we're running at twenty percent. We really value our older residents and pensioners and this budget includes total pensioner remissions of more than three point three million dollars. Pensioner remissions will continue at three hundred and thirty five dollars per year for a full pensioner and a hundred and sixty seven dollars fifty for a part pensioner. I know many councillors, including myself, would have preferred to deliver a lower rate increase for our community. This has been a very difficult deliberation. But to this end, during the budget development process, council officers were asked to model a lower rate increase, which they did. Council considered a range of rating scenarios, including an increase to the minimum general rate of four percent. The effect of a lower increase to the minimum general rate while maintaining existing service levels would result in a higher operating deficit. Under this scenario, the benefit to rate payer in a category one A owner occupied property with a median valuation was just forty cents per week. I've been asked by council office, I have been assured by council officers through this process that the budget we vote for today maintains Redland City's strong financial position, prioritizes our long term financial sustainability, efficiency and is fair for both current and future Redland City residents. It ensures no reduction in the services to our community, the services that they rightly expect us to deliver every day. And it is, it is an improvement on the nearly forecast six percent increase predicted just twelve months ago, given the very difficult situation and circumstances that we've faced. I know there are some areas that councillors will address during their upcoming speeches, which we will hear from very shortly. We have identified already some areas of improvement which we would like to make and you will hear about those in due course. And in conclusion, I would like to thank my fellow councillors for their considered approach to the, in the joint contribution over the last two months. It has been a robust discussion. I believe this has helped us to achieve a budget that delivers strong financial stewardship for our community despite some of the things that we are not entirely happy with. But we must reach a consensus and we must do the right thing by our community and by our organization. So on behalf of councillors, I would like to thank our chief executive officer, Andrew Chesterman, for his dedicated dedication to the organization and commitment to taking us through this process. I also extend my sincere appreciation to the executive leadership team. I know this was a very difficult process and we asked a lot of questions and I thank you for your patience during that time. I would also like to thank council's incredibly dedicated finance team for their expertise and support to all councillors and answering the multitude of questions. And I'd also like to thank every staff member present and previous who has had a part to play in the collaboration and in, in a part to play in putting this budget together. Thank you to the many council officers and teams who have gone above and beyond to add their advice, information and evaluation during the long and I can safely say, I think on behalf of everyone, exhaustive process to deliver this budget. It has been a team, a Redland City Council team effort. Lastly, I would like to thank our community because it is through our contributions, through our rates from all of us, all rate payers, that allow us to continue to invest in the services that we have and in infrastructure development for our community. So heartfelt thanks to everyone who continues to invest in what we do. And on behalf of council, I present the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. And I would now like to invite our CEO to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning councillors and those online. This budget is again in response to the many and varied challenges faced by Redland City Council in the current economic climate. And it's shaped, however, by recognizing that the climate is also difficult for many of those in our community. It's a four hundred and forty four million dollar budget. In line with previous years, I provide some high level insights into the challenges of the budget that's here for council to consider today. As you know, there are always trade offs that have to be balanced to match community expectations with affordability and efficiency. And it's a complex role for our councillors that's got to be balanced for what the community need and what we can afford to deliver. It's complex individually and they take it very seriously. I particularly note though that every four years, and the mayor spoke to this, that councillors face an intensely busy period following an election to work with officers to prepare what you see here today. It is indeed a steep learning curve for our new mayor and new councillors. And I particularly thank them for their questions and contributions throughout the process as they delve into the operations of our almost four hundred and fifty million dollars of our business. And as I say every year, no other business runs the breadth of service that local government does. It's one of the great things about our organization and all local governments. Redland City Council has unique challenges when there's a tendency to consider local governments as all the same and make comparisons. One of my roles in advocating for our city is to describe at every opportunity the uniqueness of our city. Close yet far, dispersed, urban, rural, even remote, marine, terrestrial and a city. These are all impacts on our costs of transport, our costs of labour, our supply chain confidence and the ability to attract solid competition. And whilst the impacts of the global pandemic are now subsiding, as you know, they're not completely behind us. You will have seen in the news only yesterday, Australia is the only country in the G ten where underlying inflation has increased since December, the only country. The headline inflation rate rose from three point six to four percent in May. So it is still a very volatile economic situation we're in. Unemployment remains low and attracting and retaining the best employees is amongst one of our biggest challenges as an organization. Our exit interviews show that people leave for new opportunities and almost universally higher remuneration. So we continue to compete on Redland City Council being one of the best places to live, play and for us, work. Our turnover is settling, which is great, however, to manageable numbers and it's really good to see. Employee numbers, as you know, have remained relatively stable for the last seven years and it's clear that there's more being done with the same resources. This budget sees some previous additions continued and requests a small number of new employees for specific tasks or initiatives. On city growth, in the sense that South East Queensland is booming and therefore bringing in far more revenue, this is not the case in Redland City Council. Our low growth rate in the city, less than one percent and fewer large commercial precincts provide substantially less revenue opportunities than many of our neighbours. If comparisons are to be made, they must consider the whole dynamic. And one of the fundamental tenets of the Local Government Act is to continually improve. It's actually required under legislation. So pleasingly, our business transformation and our strategic procurement programs have made huge inroads into efficiencies in the organization. Along with an overarching business efficiency program and review of service levels, which is always ongoing, we will see further benefits arise. The mayor spoke to the fact that in built into this budget are thirteen million dollars of operational savings, which will need to be found over the course of the next year ahead. They're not set and forget. They are a challenge, but they're a challenge that's been accepted by the organization who will work hard to achieve them. Procurement efficiency dividends, continued pressure on materials and services negotiations and savings across the employee wages bill are all active tensions being managed in the year ahead. We also have a first class team who seek out every opportunity for grants and subsidies. The revenue equation is just as important. To give you some insight into the year just gone and some of the great work achieved, let me name a few facts and figures that set us up well for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year and bring to, bring to life the work of our dedicated and expert employees. It's not an exhaustive list. I've just chosen a few. Our capital works delivery this year of over two hundred projects and more than a hundred million dollars will be a record achievement by a significant margin. We did this by planning ahead, having designs ready for funding opportunities, running early industry engagement sessions. Our procurement team has achieved close to a million dollars of savings and there's double that planned for the year ahead. Our health and environment team won the Queensland Environment Health Team of the Year Award. The Urban Development Institute of Australia has a development assessment monitoring dashboard. Redland City Council is below the average timeframe for decisions of participating councils in six of the seven categories. We delivered fourteen billion litres of water to over sixty four thousand connected properties in Redlands and Redland Bay by the thirteen hundred kilometres of water pipelines. We've done over three and a half thousand water quality samples. Our water main breaks per hundred kilometres are somewhere the lowest in the region. We also treat eleven billion litres of that water across seven wastewater treatment plants. And our talent sourcing program has delivered savings of over two hundred thousand dollars to date, just in the year gone, and continues to deliver more. We've in sourced street sweeping. You will have seen a video, perhaps some of you, of our street sweeper called Ray. Hello, Ray, if you're watching, on the back of a business case that saves us over a hundred thousand dollars a year and now offers faster cycling. and now offers faster cycle times and more reactive services where necessary. We've created a better R pack, improving the visitor experience, safety and access for our guests this financial year through the completion of the car park, the drop-off and cafe services, following successfully securing one point nine million dollars in funding from the Australian Government's Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme. And we're now deploying a new technology solution which over the coming years will greatly enhance our business capabilities through process improvements, automation, data sharing between business functions within council, improved business insights and reporting. And all of this will ultimately enhance our customers' experience when interacting with council and align with their changing needs and expectations, because this is our collective aim as an organisation. In closing, can I thank the mayor and councillors for their guidance, the executive leadership team and senior leadership team for their expertise and all employees in the organisation for the work in the year gone, the countless hours put into preparing this budget and their dedication in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. As at previous special budget meetings, standing orders have been suspended to allow each councillor five minutes to speak to the budget. This is your opportunity to provide your thoughts, positive and constructive, on the overall budget package tabled at today's meeting. When we suspend standing orders, I would like to exclude sections eight point one point one, eight point one point three, eight point one point five, eight point one point six and eight point one point eight, which relate to councillor conduct and the unsuitable meeting conduct process of appendix one of council meeting standing orders. Please remember that section seven point five point six of council standing orders will be suspended and no debate may occur. Can I have a mover and seconder that council standing, standing orders are suspended excluding sections eight point one point one, eight point one point three, eight point one point five, eight point one point six, eight point one point eight and the unsuitable meeting conduct process at appendix one of council meeting standing orders to allow councillors up to five minutes each to speak to the budget? Moved by councillor Colley, seconded by councillor Bishop, put in motion. Carried, councillor Reynolds, carried unanimously. So I'd now like to, going in order of division. I would now like to ask councillor Bhagwari to speak to the budget.
Thank you, and thank you both for your, your speeches with all the information for our community. Today, like every year, is a really important point in time for any council because the budget sets the path for the coming financial year. Budget development commenced in November with a lot of the pre-work having been undertaken to have material presented to councillors. And I would sincerely like to thank all the teams who contribute to that because I believe it is every single group within council has to get their budget in and then group managers go through it and on it goes through many, many levels until it gets to us. And it is a stressful process at any time, let alone in the year when we have an election. I would also like to say thank you to the mayor and councillors as from late April, it's been an intense period with many workshops, long workshops and lots of sandwiches, and the new councillors having to learn how a council budget actually works. And that does add a different level of stress for everybody. But I think we got through it well and I wanted to say thank you. The mayor even as late as last week called us all together again and staff came along to answer last-minute questions. A budget has to be fiscally responsible and councillors have a direct influence over the revenue budget. We need to consider impacts on residents financially, levels of service, while raising revenue to ensure the sustainability of the council. Councils deliberated all aspects this year and the impact on land valuations was utmost in our minds. It's something we don't always have to think about at budget time, but this year, with a whopping thirty-three per cent increase across our city, we had to think of how we could mitigate this impact on our residents. So we made changes to the residential banding categories. As in previous years, it was acknowledged that the higher value properties are most affected by any increase. And I'm happy to say, though there wasn't sufficient time for this year's budget, this concern has been actioned and we will be reviewing it before the next budget. To help with rate impacts, there is also a responsible deficit this year of one point four million to help relieve rates. I say responsible as councillors using previously raised revenue from landfill remediation charge and instead of charging the full amount this year, and this is a savings per household. Costs across council have been reduced where possible through budget deliberations and the expenditure review committee, which I think might send shudders through some group managers. This review committee goes through line by line, every ask from every department, with a very high level of rigor, looking for actual spends, not just asks, before it even comes to councillors. So thank you to that committee for your work and probably long hours. Council officers, due to this and their other knowledge of the workings of council, have built in savings of thirteen million into the budget through efficiency asks and staffing. This is an ongoing challenge that the CEO throws out each year and monitors, though I believe this is the largest inbuilt savings we've had. The rate rise has been kept to the December CPI of five point five one, which is less than, as the mayor mentioned, we had previously thought. And though popular in media releases to go below CPI, there are negative and compounding financial impacts on council's future financial sustainability. Though in March this year it was lowered, the council officers have explained to us the number of costs that are coming to council which are far beyond this CPI. And I don't know whether we would have time in today's meeting, but I think it would be really interesting at some stage for the community to hear from the CEO and his explanation of how it does compound. And we mightn't be able to do that today, but maybe at another general meeting because I think it's vital information. Our Redlands area does have a beautiful coastline and wonderful island communities which we value. However, as the CEO and mayor mentioned, there are higher costs associated with transport, et cetera. Recently, another coastal council with an island community announced a ten point five per cent rate rise, which illustrates the different costs of a coastline, island council compared to a more land-based council. Council has been advocating for regional status for our islands for years. This would allow us access to increased funding and this advocacy will continue for many reasons, including this funding, to help reduce rates. Because unlike other councils, Redlands is unique and I guess that's why we love it and why we live here. Our council does not have a large commercial or other industry base to subsidise rates. Redlands' commercial base is only seven per cent. In some of our neighbouring councils, this is up to four or five times higher.
Councillor Bhagwari, I'll just let you know you're at five minutes.
Already, okay. Initially for this year, a hundred and fifty-five million capex was forecast, however, through the process, this amount was reduced to a hundred and eighteen million for sustainability, risk and to be realistic for delivering in today's construction economic climate. Another change has been with the capex is increased transparency and I would urge residents to have a look at the new capex book, which is the first time and it has transparently and accountably listed all our projects. I'm happy to see various projects in my division which include sports, parks, roads, footpaths, cycleways and economic development, and also across the city with safety and also improved community consultation. Councillors have to think city-wise, wide when it comes to budget and not our own divisions. And I have to say, I'm probably most pleased, and so will probably the GM of the area, because I can now change my budget speech as council is commencing a project to evaluate our water and waste to meet our future demands and upgrades. This to me is even, it's a multi-million dollar project over many years, but it brings such great comfort because to me, the health of our city depends on this vital infrastructure and this was highlighted no more than during Covid because we could all stay safe in our homes. I probably have to cut short. I just want to say about the aspects of the budget are all based upon the corporate plan and I am happy to say that the corporate plan is going to be revised and I would like to hear from the community in a very loud voice on what vision you want to have to direct future budgets. So while I am pleased to say the mitigation and changes that have occurred throughout this budget deliberations, and again, I appreciate the staff and the previous mentioned actions which are to follow, which have been agreed upon to commence, I do hold some concerns but trust moving forward, future budgets will have less stress on residents and council sustainability while delivering what we need to keep Redlands naturally wonderful.
Thank you councillor Bhagwari. And I now invite councillor Mitchell to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and the community. It was an intense and shortened budget prep, but there are no excuses. You put our hand up to, to stand and, and we wear it and I think we've done a pretty good job in, in the time with the great help of the CEO and the, and the ELT. So also pass on my thanks to them. The rate increase was restrained to five point five one per cent. Community, that is just enough, that is just enough to continue the services and the infrastructure that you demand through us. There is no fat in this budget. The CEO has mentioned the, the ERC, where line by line thirteen million dollars of stretch target savings were found. And that's going to create a culture within the organisation, or continue, should I say, the culture within the organisation of great value for money and only spending what we need to at the right time. We have maintained pensioner discounts. We have carried a small deficit at one point five million dollars, which we probably expect to claw back as well, just adding a little bit more tension into the organisation. Raby Bay and Lakeside residents, there was more money collected than has been spent. So great news in that your forward estimates have been reduced down, but that of course changes depending on what happens in that community over time. Important to note the council's sustainability measures, all ten, we've either been on target or exceeded. So that's also should give the community great comfort. I'm sure many people around this table will speak to the challenges, they've already been there. Inflation is not softening, it remains very volatile. The, the rate rises between thirty and sixty per cent in some of our communities were very challenging. And while we will be reviewing that rate in carrot degree, I also want to note those higher value properties, and they're not all in the areas you'd expect, some in Amity Point, Dunwich, as well as Raby Bay down at Wallow, there are pockets in our community that are really going to get a bit of a hit this time round and I acknowledge that, but we'll, we are going to be trying to look after you a little bit better into the future. Our commercial base has been noted, other councils are up to four times higher than ours. So that, that makes it a little easier for them to make residential rates a little lower. Perhaps the biggest challenge of all is the cost shifting from state and federal governments. Councils are being strangled around this country for revenue. The feds have halved the revenue over twenty years. So many millions of dollars that should be into our communities and the one per cent of taxation needs to be restored to councils to make it easier. They're pinching the pocket of the rate payer and, and that's not good enough anymore. So as we approach federal elections, that is probably the headline. State government, three hundred and twenty-five per cent increase over the last ten years of shift, cost shifting onto councils. They're pinching the pocket of the poorest rate payers in this city. It's not good enough state government, you need to do better. Forty million dollars bulk water is one, the seven hundred bus stops. What the hell is council doing paying for bus stops, which is a state government responsibility and public transport? And there are many more that others will share around the table. Our islands, all should be regional status. The state and the federal government now do not respect the demographic of our island or the remoteness or the costs. Not good enough. Why is that important in a budget speech? Because this impacts the bottom line, the services that we deliver to you, the community. It is not good enough, state and federal governments. Councils are being very responsible. This council is being incredibly responsible. I'll, I'll, I won't comment on what their federal members said on the state government budget, but it was pretty damning. Whereas our, our lending per capita is very low, we have money in the bank, we don't put everything on the credit card, we are a model for financial sustainability and we would like our higher levels of government to reflect that. Capital works in my division, some wonderful things, R pack. I want to highlight the million dollars that we've put into the emergent capital fund. I think that's going to be really terrific to hit some of those high-value community assets that may fail for whatever reason during a term. Up until this point, it's been really challenging to, to repair or replace those fast because of our responsible budget process. This almost creates like a flying fund for those. It won't be miracles, but I think it's a great initiative.
I'll just let you know councillor Mitchell, you're at five minutes now.
I'm at five minutes as well, I will wrap up fairly quickly. My community, I will put up for Stradie and Cleveland, the, the highlights in our division, of course, but recognising that across the years, it swings and roundabouts. Across the city long term, everyone gets a fair go, year to year. Yeah, sometimes you get a little bit more and sometimes you get a bit less and I respect that. The operational expenditure, please, community, go and have a look at your operational budget, some wonderful things in there. I am self-anointed chief cheerleader of our digital transformation programme. It's wonderful, I think that's going to put a lot of efficiencies into the organisation, but also the community engagement element of that will be greatly enhanced. Community engagement portion, by the way, in Middle Street in Cleveland, sometime over this year, will also be a face-to-face dropping engagement area in the new council building there. So I think that's also a great thing. What a great city we live in. Shout out to one of our newest Redlanders, my new grandchild Josie, who's one week old, Josie of Cleveland, and the four generations of my family that live here. I think of you and that helps me think of the whole community when we put together a budget. I've every confidence of my own ability and with the support of the CEO and the officers and the colleagues to meet some of those external challenges very well. I'm proud of my budget record across nine unique budgets and I think the community should be very confident of what this council's done and will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Now, I'd like to invite councillor Golly to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank all the staff who day in, day out, go out into our community to make a real difference. And I genuinely and heartfelt thank you for the efforts. I'm deliberately looking at the camera so you know I'm talking to you. I'd like to thank the ELT that have worked diligently with us over the past weeks to nut through what is a very difficult time. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the community, for the first time in eight years, thinking of the whole community, I cannot in good conscience support the proposed budget for Redland City Council. First and foremost, I must address the issue of accountability and integrity in plain speaker. During the last local government election campaign, statements to our community were made, statements that were not true. These election statements were pivotal in garnering support and securing votes based on undermining mine and my colleagues' professional reputations, despite there being previous factors beyond our control, such as increased state government land valuations and Covid mitigation measures. Trust in our elected officials is the cornerstone of our democratic process.
Councillor, councillor, I'll just remind you, you don't have parliamentary privilege.
Thank you. What have I breached? Officers, what have I breached?
It's a reminder from me.
Oh, right. Okay. So, thank you. Trust in our elected officials. Firstly, I haven't mentioned any names, ladies and gentlemen, and I've kept this fairly broad. Trust in our elected officials is the cornerstone of our democratic process. When that trust is broken, it undermines the very foundation upon which our local government operates. Based on statements made during the election, any rate increase today, regardless of percentage or reason, is an increase on what was touted during the election as being the highest rates in South East Queensland. Cost of living. Residents face future financial cost of living impacts, and I for one won't be contributing to those hardships. One such impact is the recent letter received by residents stating their power bills will increase again on July 1st, irrespective of state government promises of sweeteners. Division three, the budget in its current form fails to address critical infrastructure needs within Division three. While I acknowledge under the Act, I am bound to support the entire city. Division three is home to several streets and neighbourhoods that are in dire need of repair and maintenance. Despite repeated assurances, these areas have been overlooked in the proposed budget. It is unacceptable that residents of Division three should continue to face substandard conditions while other areas receive the necessary funding and attention. Investing in our infrastructure is not merely a matter of convenience. It is essential for the safety and wellbeing of our residents. Neglecting these needs not only diminishes the quality of life, but also poses risks that can and should be mitigated with proper funding and strategic planning. I must also highlight the broader implications of this budget. When we allocate resources inequitably, we create divisions within our community. Every street, every home, every committee, every resident deserves fair and equal consideration. By ignoring the needs of Division three, we are sending a message that some areas are more deserving of attention and resources than others. This is not the message I want to be sending to my constituents. In conclusion, while I understand the complexities and challenges of budget planning, I cannot support a budget that is built on false election statements and neglects the pressing needs of my constituents. Thank you.
Councillor Hewlett, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. I'd just like to say, opening that every councillor in this room during the workshops we had towards budget are very costly, of a cost of living precious. And there's not one councillor in this room that isn't aware of it. And I was kind of buoyed by everyone's comments about their concern for the community, which I think all of us share. So very proud to be part of that team. I think post-Covid, we've hit a perfect storm. And as the mayor and the CEO alluded to, we've had enormous increase in cost in insurance, fuel, mortgage stress out there for the public. Like my mortgage went up from 1,500 to 2,000 a month when my fixed interest rate stopped. So, and that has an impact on all families across that are suffering that mortgage stress. So plus there's more things in the council meets than just the household bills. They also have asphalt, concrete, all these things we buy that the average house doesn't buy. And I know, for example, sand on the beaches has gone up dramatically. Like it hasn't gone up twofold, it's gone up like 15 fold. It's just incredible. When I hear these prices that have gone up, building costs and resources, you understand. I'm finally to understand how councillors operating business as usual on the budget that we've got. Because I think they're doing a brilliant job. They've cut all the fat off, more fat than they can possibly cut off. To do, to drop this budget any lower would mean a drop in the level of service. That's my honest opinion. I'd like to congratulate the mayor on her transition into a very demanding role. I think she's done an absolutely brilliant job. I'd also like to congratulate the CEO, the ELT, and particularly the finance team who've provided all the information. Congratulate the teams in the field, as councillor Golly alluded to. They've done a brilliant job out there. Like you've got people out there like David Katovic, that has been a Warsaw. But like, I always think of David because he helps me a lot. But they all, it's great the feedback. I noticed, I'm happy with the CapEx this year. I'm getting some good projects in Victoria Point, which I'm very happy with. And I take my hat off to Chris Isles, for example, with this new capital expenditure book that you've done. Congratulations. Thank you. And I'd also like to, I also want to thank the community for their acceptance of hard times. Because there's groups out there, like in southern, in my area, Champions Food Services, Night Ninjas, Lighthouse Care, and many of the schools doing breakfasts for students. There's also Facebook pages now offering free goods to people out there. So it's this whole cost of living thing's being accepted by the community and the community are aware of it and sharing it. So it's a really important thing. The Redlands has a wonderful community and I'm really proud to be part of it. As the CEO alluded to, our rate base contains very little commercial rates. And compared to our other state around in Tewksbury, the Gold Coast slogan and even Brisbane, they've got massive commercial bases, massive apartments accommodate all those things that they're drawing enormous rates from, where we have fairly unique ones. Plus we've got cultural issues, not cultural issues, but cultural things that we have to address now, which have a cost impulse. So all these things combined, I think we're delivering a very frugal budget. I think it's exemplary considering the cost of living pressures that we as a council face. And talking about the state government, I think some of the things they're doing with the transport rebates, the 50 cent fares, the electricity rebates, the registration discounts, they're all helping people as well. So I take my hat off to what the state government are doing as well. I think they've done a great job in relieving cost of living pressures. So in conclusion, thank you. Thank you again to the whole team. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hewlett. And I now invite councillor Rendles to speak.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to congratulate you, the CEO and the ELT on this is your first budget. Budget of $444 million, almost half a billion dollars. I'd also like to extend my thanks and acknowledge the excellent work that the executive team and council staff involved in the development of this budget. The depth and transparency of information provided to councillors during the budget process is to be commended. Thank you all. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of my colleagues in shaping this budget. So thank you all. As the CEO noted, the CPI over the last month in May was 4%. That's a 4% growth on May last year. What we also need to bear in mind that it's compounding because May last year was a 4% growth on the preceding period. This means that at a time of high cost of living and a concern in the community about every dollar spent, it is important in this first budget of the current council to affirm and reassure residents that Redland City Council neither has nor has had the highest rates in Queensland. It is equally important to assure residents that council finances have been through stringent and independent audits. Councillors have received briefing by Queensland Treasury to that effect. And Redlands is at the forefront of financial sustainability and performance and its responsiveness to operational inquiries. Thank you and well done. We need to bear this in mind moving forward. Even so, we are cognizant of the challenges we all face with the rising cost of living, that the drivers of these increased costs are outside of the hands of council. And indeed, as has been noted, are partly driven by cost shifting to council by the federal and state governments. The city budget is a balancing act between the competing needs and wants of the community and what the community can and is willing to fund. Each councillor is very aware of the local issues and needs in their community. And we all advocate strongly for our respective areas. But we all work together to take a citywide view and ensure that projects that will maintain the amenity of our community, protect our environment, protect our quality of life and make a positive contribution to the economic development of the city are supported. I am not, and I do not believe any of my colleagues are totally satisfied with the budget. While this budget maintains all existing services and delivers new operating capital and infrastructure projects, we all have a large list of additional things we'd have liked to have seen funded. Equally, we have avoided the short-term sugar hits that have been apparent in the current state government to deliver a budget that will deliver long-term and sustainable benefits to our community. My division, Redland Bay and the Southern Morton Bay Islands, includes some of the most disadvantaged communities in Australia. In terms of coastline, mine is the wettest division. I'm particularly aware of the shortfall in essential services in my community, services that metropolitan areas take for granted. Our islands are essentially large country towns separated by water. On the islands, our shortfall in roads, footpaths, drainage, sewerage, infrastructure, things that are taken for granted on the mainland is primarily due to the development process the state government undertook prior to the transfer of the islands to Redland Shire Council. It's a long time ago, but the legacy lives on. The removal of regional funding status by the current federal government has limited access to important regional funds. And that flows on to decisions by this current state government. Unlike the scenic rim or Gold Coast, the islands were not approved for disaster relief funding by the state government after the Christmas Eve storms, which left us without power for almost two weeks. Without NBN coverage, without Telstra, we couldn't even dial triple zero. The limited to no support by state governments creates complex challenges for the islands, similar to many rural and remote towns. And from a council perspective, much of the cost of addressing these is transferred to council. We noted the $3 million that's been allocated for green selling, the end of the road so far for $22 million over since 2016. And we're still probably only two thirds of the way there. Clearly, I would have liked to have seen reduced costs to rate payers and more services for our respective divisions and the city as a whole. We would all have. But this budget delivers savings relative to rising costs of service delivery and also maintains and expands current service delivery. As the economic conditions improve, and we may see a much needed change in funding and policy support from other levels of government in the lead up to and following the state election, we can revisit the budget and continue to fine tune services that we deliver. While we can't always get everything we would like in the budget, from my perspective, if we can get 80 or 90% of what we would like, it is a budget that I will support. And I'd commend this budget to my fellow councillors.
Thank you councillor Rendles. Deputy Mayor Talty, I'd like to invite you to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you councillors. As has been noted, and I won't hone in on particular items in the budget. Council, like all of our families, are under considerable financial pressure with inflation. And we have a $444 million budget before us today. As the mayor noted, we are aboard, we are trying to set strategy. And as has been noted by other councillors, we are doing our best to ensure that the city is well provided for into the future. And we are not putting undue stress on future generations through things like our debt policy, our borrowing policies and our financial strategies. Time has been a great pressure on this particular group of councillors and the mayor coming in straight after an election. And I understand that that is being considered by the state across the state. Because for all councillors to be sworn in in April and have to produce a budget by June is very challenging. Particularly when you have a high number of new councillors or inexperienced councillors to learn so much. And I commend our new councillors and our mayor on trying to be on such a steep learning curve and also come straight in, you know, basically hit the ground running and have to do a very difficult job. We have high costs and we have no crystal balls. We do our best to figure out what is the inflation rate that we need to take note of. And as has been noted, I think councillor Hewlett noted that while we have general inflation, we have also got inflation from a commercial industrial perspective, which has seen since Covid, things like steel increased by over 70%. And the work that council does, along with the environmental costs in doing approvals at state and federal level, legal costs, all those things have blown out considerably. Not through any fault of any member or department of council, simply by pressures of the world and the zeitgeist in which we operate and exist. Responsible fiscal management does mean hard decisions. And I believe this council has done its best to protect the community and the city for the future, based on the information that we have available. We've had, as has been noted, incredible valuation increases post-Covid with over 30% increases in many, certainly in many of my residential rate payers' properties. And this came compounding on top of some 30 and 25% increases at the last valuation. So my rate payers in Division six, many of them had an increase at last valuation two years ago of over 20%, 25, 28%. And then had another valuation increase of over 30% on top of that again. That puts considerable pressure on a system that is legislatively required to take into consideration the proportion of those increases in relation to the proportion of rates collected from those land owners. Mitigating this has been a challenge. And I would just flag that at 5.4, whilst we have done our best in this timeframe and this budget to mitigate for those land valuations, we will be looking at further investigating if there are any other measures that we can take as we prepare for next year's budget within those rating categories to mitigate those increasing valuation pressures that we find as a very pleasant place to live with a great value placed upon it by those who would like to live here and those who are coming in particularly from other states and being on the doorstep of a major metropolitan city. This is driving our valuations up and therefore it has an effect that is difficult to mitigate on our rates mathematics. Achieving a 5.51% increase is a very good outcome for the majority of rate payers. But it is difficult for, it's difficult for councillors, not alone your average rate payer, to understand the math that sits in behind the way the legislation functions to distribute the collection of those monies across those valued properties. The median increase for our poorest, if you like, properties is at around $3.92 per week increase.
Deputy Mayor, I'll just let you know you're at five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council has been cognizant of this and has worked to maintain a strong position for the future, which ensures our service levels. And will continue to review those service levels, I'm sure. Growth is one of our many challenges and causes a tension within our community. Our community believes we've had significant growth and our growth of infrastructure has not kept up with our growth. But at a state level where we have to look for funding for those things, our growth is considerably smaller than our surrounding councils. So we are constantly behind the eight ball in trying to attract that funding. I know it's a bit of a tradition within community, within Queensland, within Australia to, you know, have a whack at council, have a whack at council workers. But we have around 1,100 people working in this organisation, most of whom are also resident rate payers. And they do put their heart and soul into what they do, and I thank them for all of the work that they do every day. So that needs to be acknowledged. And with that, I will leave you all to your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year presents its own challenges when delivering a budget. This year, we've had a significant land value increases that we've had to mitigate, along with an election cycle to navigate around and a messaging that was drummed into our community for more than 12 months about our rates in comparison to other South East Queensland councils. Add to that a new shaping South East Queensland plan that we have to implement, including significant infrastructure planning to accommodate the additional growth we're expected to accept, along with an additional 900 hectares of land added to our urban footprint by the state government. This planning all comes at an additional cost to council and therefore rate payers. As does the requirement from the state government for councils to as does the requirement from the state government for councils to now regulate state-run food businesses, including school tuck shops, public hospitals, public residential aged care facilities and correctional facilities, along with personal appearance businesses, and now we're doing fire ant management. Decisions made at a federal and state government level can and does have an impact on council's budget, which therefore impacts rates. Over the last 10 years, there has been a 325% increase in cost shifting over to local councils. This includes delivering public transport facilities to our southern Moreton Bay Islands. Meanwhile, council collects only 3% of all taxation residents pay. We don't have mining royalties or GST distributions or payroll or income tax, and the federal government reduced their funding of local governments, so we no longer receive 1% of federal taxation revenue via the federal assistance grants. An ongoing, which is an ongoing advocacy piece of the Local Government Association of Queensland, to have this restored. We also have a very small commercial rate base. Almost 90% of our rate revenue comes from residential homeowners. Despite the challenges our islands face in relation to access to services, healthcare, employment opportunities, and access to the mainland, all attributes of regional communities, they don't qualify for regional funding from either the state or federal governments. In short, both the state and federal governments, who combined, receive 90% of all taxation, need to appropriately fund council to provide critical infrastructure, clean drinking water, recreational and sporting facilities, waste management and sewage treatment for our communities. Despite these challenges, we continue to deliver for our community. This budget includes $11 million for open space, parks and conservation. Division Seven residents will be pleased to hear that I have secured funding for solar lighting in Robert Markey Park. We have $9.5 million for transport infrastructure, including expansion of our active travel network. Almost $30 million for roads and traffic, which includes the ongoing duplication of Panorama Drive Wellington Street. Residents will be pleased to know that these works are expected to be completed this year. Detailed planning for the Kinross Road upgrade is being funded, which gives me hope that there's light at the end of the tunnel for the ongoing traffic woes along this road. Over $31 million for the not-so-sexy but critical part of infrastructure delivery in water, wastewater and waste, including $3 million for construction of a new gravity main and pump station to service the Kinross Road estate. We have accepted a $1.4 million deficit by collecting less revenue from the landfill remediation separate charge, instead using money in the bank to fund these works. What I'm really not happy about with this budget is the rate rise that is above Redland CPI. I did not support about $800,000 worth of the, for the hiring of additional office staff, which could have brought the rate rise down in line with our CPI. We need more staff on the ground to address community and councillors' expectations with regards to our parks and roadside maintenance. That includes additional mowing over the summer school holidays, tree trimming, clearing undergrowth, fallen trees and built-up vegetation, weed management and rubbish removal. This budget has not addressed those issues to my satisfaction. I also do not support cancelling the Christmas by Starlight event, one year after the community was finally able to enjoy it again after Covid. This free council event was enjoyed by thousands. The compensating factor of this is we will be launching a new adventure trail event, however, this will not be completely free to attendees. I would like to thank the CEO, ELT and council officers for the cost-saving measures that have been incorporated into the budget, and thank you to the financial team for the time taken to answer all of our questions that have arisen throughout this process.
Thank you, councillor Mackenzie. I just have a question in relation to, can someone answer in relation to the Christmas celebrations, what we do have planned?
Thank you, Mayor. Council is preparing to package up a bunch of activities across all of our council services, so our libraries in digiscares and RPAC, as well as delivering a smaller community event at Rabie Bay Harbour. So there will still be free events for our community to enjoy over Christmas, and we're also starting to work now with our local businesses to see how they can contribute to a full package of Christmas activities for our community. We're also working on having four unstaffed activation areas across the Redlands, so north, south, central and islands, so that there will be a nice Christmas experience that people can have in their local community.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I also just have another question in relation to the positions that councillor Mackenzie just raised, and the impact that the removal of that could have had, that comment around the impact to the minimum general rate and the removal of those positions. Could you make a comment in relation to that, CEO?
I can, but without the specific number, I'd probably have to defer to our finance people to do the numbers. But it, yeah, I mean, it would make a difference. We've put up the positions that we thought were necessary, partly associated with our need to continually improve our services and not drop our standards, and also we have some major projects that are, you know, the review of city plan being one that's coming up, where we've needed to resource some of those positions. But it's probably a point for discussion further in the agenda, probably not at this point, and I might put them on notice for that when you get into the budget document itself.
Thank you. All right, councillor Hughes, I invite you to speak.
I appreciate the sentiment around the room and the thought, the depth, the breadth we've covered, from the smaller things to the biggest of them all. And I'd like to start with a very special thanks to our immediate past chief financial officer, Deborah Corbett Hall, who has very recently left council. Her dedication to Redland City for such a long time was exemplary. Her personal support to everyone in the organisation was simply a given, always trusted advice, and her huge smile. And I feel extremely privileged to have had the opportunity to work with Deborah and have a greater understanding of the enormous budget process, that is a continuous work in progress, understanding of the enormous, the, just, it's really hard to convey how big this process is when you, I remember when we were first, I was first elected, and we were arguing, I think it was six cents on one of the levies at one stage, and that's when I learnt, no, there has to be a number that can be divisible by four and all of those sorts of things. When you're talking about cents in such a $440 million budget, really, I can't emphasise how much goes into it. And I'd like to just then, handing over the baton to Michael and team, and thank you, CEO, to our entire organisation. An enormous focus of mine has been our landfill sites, and I've banged on about those for years, which predominantly are our sporting fields, and it's pretty exciting to share that this year we will see council starting works on the key project, love it, it's got a heading, the key project at Judy Holt Reserve, which is our Redlands Rugby Union Club, our muddies on the northern landfill batters. Following years of planning, we are now finally, yay, good to go. However, you will note that on your landfill remediation separate charge for 2425, it's actually going down this year from $59.32 to $41.88, which maybe doesn't seem a lot to some people, $17.44 in savings, but times that by the whole city, that is a lot, and as spoken about previously, and councillor Mackenzie also just mentioned it, we have a provision in council, and we're holding on our balance sheet $14.68 million, and this amount has been considered when calculating this year's separate charge, as we draw down $1.465 million from that provision. Divisionally, my biggest disappointment for the past couple of years has been the park on Tullock Drive at Wellington Point. Councillor Bishop and I are high-fiving that it's missed out on funding for the last few years, and with the great news, thank you so much to the team, that as the long-awaited player equipment upgrade is now included in this year's capital programme, watch this space. Residents can also look forward to a fabulous new gym equipment in Montgomery Drive Park at Wellington Point, and in Kapalabar, the Bowen Street Park playground equipment will finally be getting a new shade cover, and there's a lot of planning starting for other parks around our city already. Drainage and water flow has been a massive issue in and around Abelia Street, Alexandra Hills, and residents will see significant changes and upgrade designed to help alleviate the tremendous stress they have been under every time there is a major weather event. The road and drainage upgrades to Crown and William Street, Alexandra Hills, and also a portion of Allenby Road, Alex Hills, will form part of a citywide street reseal programme, as councillor Rendell's mentioned, that literally mainland to the islands. Every year, everyone's looking at who gets what roads, and as always popular, the footpath upgrades in Division Eight will see McDonald Road, Alex Hills and Wellington Point, having some very happy residents around that area with a major section walkway upgrade, with future section to Macmillan Road, Alex Hills planned next year. That will combine, and we talk about fixing those missing links. This is a big, a really big section coming together. In closing, I would like to repeat something that I've said very clearly over recent years, and that is that we as councillors have very little input into the Capital Works Programme, and I respect and understand that it is a citywide programme, and we're talking about it at the front of the programme, but again, I truly feel that councillors should have the ability, right at the front of the budget process, to share our divisional needs, our hotspots, our voice for our communities, and that those identified needs should be given a weighting of consideration. I'm never asking to say, I want this or I want that. I'm just saying if we had more opportunity at the front to give that weighting of consideration, I'm not asking to influence the budget, I'm asking to be able to share my community's greatest concerns with regard to direct correlation to the budget allocation, and I think councillor Gollay has expressed those exact sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Councillor Gollay.
Thank you, Mayor. Delivering a responsible budget is one of the most important tasks for any council. While the task of ratifying the budget falls to the mayor and 10 councillors, pulling everything together requires the efforts of many right across the organisation. I would like to acknowledge the officers who have worked to get us here, especially those who have provided direction and advice during budget deliberations, which have taken place in the short time since the election. If the truth be told, the tight turnaround from council being sworn in to now, just 11 weeks, does not allow us enough time to make drastic changes to the current trajectory of the organisation with this budget. There are certainly elements of this budget which I am not 100% comfortable with, and we've heard already that many others are of the same view. Through the many hours spent in budget deliberations with my colleagues, I am satisfied, however, with the healthy balance this budget strikes, a balance between ensuring we can continue to deliver the important services and projects our community relies on us to deliver, while being mindful of the challenging economic conditions Redlanders are facing. This budget includes measures to minimise the financial impact on ratepayers at this time. Council has reduced the landfill remediation separate charge by almost 30% for property owners, drawing on $1.46 million of previously collected funds for works as part of the landfill remediation programme in 2425. We have adjusted the rating category bands to mitigate property valuation increases of 31% plus by the state government. At the request of mayor and councillors, the executive leadership team has squeezed several million dollars of efficiency gains out of the organisation to minimise the total amount which needs to be levied from rates. We all thank you for your efforts with that, and our community does as well. I'm delighted to see several important park, road and footpath projects scheduled for Division Nine as part of the Capital Works Programme in this budget. These include park renewals for Spirit Drive Park, Nangando Street Park, Brosnan Drive Park, Howlett Road Park and Redlands Baseball Park, road renewal for Wilson Court and Zandra Street in Kapalabar, footpath expansion for Spirit Drive and Pitwin Road North, as well as the installation of new pathway lighting from Holland Crescent to the shopping centre, which will give residents an additional sense of safety in that area. While on the subject of capital works, special thanks must go to Chris Isles and the AMP team, who have overseen the development of an annual Capital Works Programme document, which provides visibility to the community of proposed works for the year ahead. It really highlights the vast array of works which council is responsible for, and demonstrates our commitment to being transparent about council spending. It is important to note the projects listed are subject to change, but they represent the intended delivery programme at this time. Again, I would like to acknowledge all of the individuals who have spent many hours working on this budget. I look forward to participating in a more extensive, robust budget process in coming years, to ensure the projects, services and programmes Redland City Council continues to deliver are in line with community expectations.
Thank you, councillor Gollay. And councillor Bishop.
Thank you very much. First of all, my thanks to the finance team, to ELT, all of the executive leadership team, and to our CEO. Councillors, especially the new councillors, a huge amount of work to get across, and our mayor for managing this complex process of putting the budget together, especially in the three short months since election for this new council. In many ways, I see this as a transitional budget. We have a new mayor, new council, and we've not yet had the opportunity to commence the essential review process for the city's major defining strategic document, the corporate plan, which guides all our council decisions in partnership with the community, which I encourage that we will be doing in the year ahead. We still have many big-ticket items attached to our major projects, which I flagged with some concern previously, and I urge us to make sure that we manage expectations by running large proposals through our enterprise management framework, so we can be robustly clear with stakeholders and community and ourselves about the suitability, size and scope of plans projected to suit our budget limitations in a market that's facing ongoing pressure in South East Queensland as we approach 2032. Doing so will increase our accuracy, consistency and efficiency and effectiveness when it comes to future budgets, and ensure that we remain within sustainable parameters, which is encouraged. And I also appreciate the efficiencies over the last increase of the, I mean, moving toward the two- and three-year portfolio management office efficiencies. When it comes to debt and borrowings, I'm keen to ensure that we plan strategically with a focus on renewal versus non-renewal. I note in item 5.1 that we're now commencing a review of one-third of our major water and wastewater infrastructure assets and other assets, which will form the basis of indexed expectations that we're going to need to manage across the city in coming years. It's hoped there will be few surprises as we learn about the age and condition of our underground infrastructure and other essential assets like roads, et cetera, and also as we manage closed landfill remediation issues that are a legacy of past practice. I believe that these factors do warrant our attention, and the assessments are long overdue. This year, residents have been notified of a 31% state valuation increase, and we've all worked hard to reduce the budget and keep it at 5.51% as a rate increase across the city. Rates may seem easy to compare with other South East Queen councils, but as others have mentioned, we need to acknowledge Redland City doesn't have the extra benefit of high commercial, industrial or seasonal tourism categories that offset our primary owner-occupier residential rates base. We also have a unique archipelago of islands with a range of social, economic, environmental and cultural legacy, challenges that we need to manage as a city, along with 335 kilometres of coastline, and that has not as yet been recognised for regional status and is therefore not accessible, doesn't able to, is not able to access funding by state and federal governments, which remains a burden for us all to carry as a city, and I do look forward to further collaboration and partnership with the state and federal government in a range of areas. Yet we do live in a great area, and our council officers have worked tirelessly to ensure we're delivering the best outcomes for residents in the most effective and efficient manner possible. Principal-based decision-making remains a fundamental pillar that I encourage us to continue, noting that there will be further banding to address the, any potential perceived inconsistencies to do with equity and fairness across the residential rates base. We've looked at a range of cost of living measures and encourage residents who are facing hardship to reach out to our offices to discuss any concerns that you have if you're finding it hard to pay rates. When it comes to fees and charges... When it comes to fees and charges, councillors are always keen to hear your feedback so we can guide deliberations ahead of the next budget or undertake reviews if necessary. Last year, I did call for visibility, greater visibility in the Capital Works Plan. I'm so delighted that officers have now produced this 22 page document to really identify for residents what they can see will be happening, weather and conditions notwithstanding in being delivered around the city. So thanks to the mayor and to the CEO and ELT for all of that extra work. In Division 10, I'm pleased to see a number of road, drainage, footpath and roadworks, as well as renewals of parks in Wanita Street, Leicester Street, Harrogate Drive, Ren Park and of course Taluk Drive, which is long overdue. With regard to Strong Communities Catalyst Project Two, Berkdale Community Lands, Willard Farm and Tinglepa Creek corridor commitment to a shared vision for the land, I remain concerned that council's plan for the Whitewater Rafting Centre does seem at odds with both community expectations and the uniquely irreplaceable cultural heritage and environmental values that exist on the site. These seem to be of a lesser priority than the plan to deliver a sporting venue that few people considered to be essential until council decided that it was. Somehow, it appears we're delivering enabling infrastructure and have other parties construct this Olympic venue, subject to satisfying EPBC requirements. Yet our community still do not know how, if or when the other aspects of the elements in the broader master plan are planned, to be funded or delivered, or at what price.
Just let you know you're at five minutes.
Thank you. To the community, I want to thank every single resident who's volunteered at Working Bees for not-for-profit clubs and also extend a thanks to all of the officers in city sport and venue strengthening communities across our frontline team members, Indigenous liaison officers, other arts, cultural, environmental officers, outdoor crews who interface with our community and help smooth out issues when they arise. Your efforts on behalf of our community make us proud and are greatly appreciated. I believe officers have made great steps over the last few years to address some of the challenges and concerns that I've previously raised. And I'd very much like to thank the mayor for encouraging us to share openly our discussions, our concerns, grievances and common sense suggestions with regards to this budget so that we can all share the same information at the same time. I know we're not all happy with every aspect of the budget and we all wish that we could do more, but I'm grateful that we've worked together in partnership with officers to deliver this transitional budget to the start of a new term. So thank you all very much.
Thank you councillor Bishop. As councillors have had the opportunity to speak to the budget in the interest of time, I ask that you please consider the time spent debating each motion. Once we resume standing orders in accordance with 7.5.6 of council's meeting standing orders, I will be limiting debate to no more than two minutes per councillor. And with that said, can I have a mover and seconder that council meeting standing orders resume? Moved by councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Put the motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number five, 5.1, which is the Statement of the Estimated Financial Position for 2023/2024. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Bishop. Seconder? Thank you councillor Boglari. Councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to the motion?
Nothing further to say beyond the officer's recommendation. I commend that work.
Thank you. I put the motion. Oh, sorry. Any speakers, well, any speakers against? No? All right, put the motion. Carried unanimously. Those in favour? And that concludes agenda item number 5.1. Moving on to agenda item number 5.2, which is the National Competition Policy Requirements for Significant and Other Business Activities, 2024/25. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Hughes. Seconder? Thank you councillor Mitchell. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. I would just like to say that there's a lot of depth goes into this national competition policy and with our businesses. And we can see here the responsible officer, Michael Wilson, sitting in the, in the room. Thank you, Michael, and to your team. Much appreciated.
Are there any speakers against? Thank you. I put the motion. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. That concludes agenda item number 5.2. Moving on to agenda item number 5.3, which is the Debt Policy, 2024/2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Boglari. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, Mayor. Council's debt policy forms part of the long-term financial strategy. We all know we have very low debt. We only borrow for very specific and strategic regions. And this is reviewed each, each year to make sure it's contemporary and fit for purpose. And I believe it is.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Are there any speakers against? Yes councillor Boglari?
I was just wondering through you if an officer could also answer how they do the intergenerational borrowing so that not one particular time and point residents have any burden with debt. I think it's an interesting point.
Thank you. Acting Chief Financial Officer?
Through you, Mayor, and thank you for the question councillor Boglari. So intergenerational equity refers to assets with a long useful life. And we refer to that in council as an asset life greater than 20 years. So the intent of intergenerational assets or investments is to construct assets that provide services that will be enjoyed by current rate payers and future generation of rate payers. So the use of long-term debt spreads the cost of constructing those assets equally fairly over the generations that will enjoy those assets.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any other questions? I then put the motion. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. And that concludes agenda item number 5.3. Moving on to agenda item number 5.4, which is a categorisation of land for differential rating, 2024/2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Bishop. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Hewlett. Yes?
If I might, sorry, Mayor. Habit of saying Madam Chair. I would like to move a small amendment to just note what we've already said in regard to further reviewing the categories to offset those ongoing increasing treasury valuations. So the proposed amendment would simply note the current recommendation, but for the community and for full transparency, that we do seek to further look at how we might mitigate those valuations. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to take this on board. It is subject, it's exactly what we have been speaking to. And I think it is in line with what we have already agreed to do. In any case, it's just making it transparent and noted. So happy for that change.
Any speakers against? I then put the motion with the amendment. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. And that concludes agenda item number 5.4. Moving on to agenda item number 5.5, which is the Environment and Coastal Management Separate Charge for 2024/2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Boglari. Seconder? Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think I will and I'm hoping that there's an officer in, in the room that can also speak to this perhaps to explain because there's been a bit of a change this year with an increase in the levy. The levy is very valuable. I mean, Redlands is known as the, you know, wonderful coast. But, yep, is it right to speak to it? Yep.
Yeah, I'll invite the CEO to make.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor, to councillor Boglari. So this Environment and Coastal Management Separate Charge will be a per annum charge on a per lot basis. And it covers a whole range of activities but include the activities listed in the report. So I'll read them out just for the community's benefit and those that are watching online. It's bushland and fire management, it's foreshore and catchment rehabilitation and maintenance, it's our waterways management, it's our track and trail maintenance and repairs, our koala habitat restoration, our environmental education, enacting recommendations of what's known commonly as the SEP or the shoreline erosion management plans and coastal hazard adaptation strategy, also referred to in the organisation as the CHAZ. The Koala Conservation Initiatives related to our Koala Conservation Plan, our environmental waterway maintenance and enhancements relating to our Redlands Coast, Bay and Creek Plan, our climate change actions related to our coastal hazard adaptation strategy.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Boglari, did you have any other further comments?
Oh, thank you for that. Oh, I'll do it in the sum up if. You've been pipped at the post, thank you, by the CEO.
Do I have any speakers against?
I have a question.
Yes councillor Rendles?
That, my question is that prior to this motion being put, the works that will be undertaken as part of the Environment and Coastal Management Charge would have been funded through the general rates base. And if so, the, there would have been a differential based for each, each lot based on the ratable value of the land. So people with higher value properties would have made a higher relative contribution to the cost of delivery of those services. Whereas removing it from a rate-based calculation to a lot-based calculation will deliver savings to people with higher value lots or higher ratable value lots and transfer those costs to people with lower value. So for example, this is my understanding, it's a question for clarification. So for example, if a property last year was below the minimal rating threshold, they received no savings for the transfer of the environmental levy out of the general rate base because they were already below the threshold. But they are now incurring a cost relating to the levy because it's lot-based. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question and through you, Madam Mayor. So the revenue required to be collected through the Environment Separate Charge, as has been described, is charged on a per lot basis. So the officers determine the charge based on the number of chargeable lots and the revenue required. As the revenue required for the Environment Coastal Management Charge either increases, well, that reduces the revenue take required from the general rate. So that would put downward pressure, yes, on the minimum general rate and also the differential charging mechanism.
Thank you acting CFO. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. As we spoke about, there has been an increase in the levy. One of the reasons for the movement was actually transparency to make sure we had all the environmental projects and services listed and to ensure the funds required each year for that particular works in that year were raised and accountable to the allocated project. Our environment in Redlands has been proved over the years to be our greatest asset. And I can remember a few years ago giving a speech where through healthy land and waterways, it was something like 23 million. And if you'd go regionally, it's billions that our environment supporting us and our local businesses is actually worth. I would also just like to mention the hundreds of volunteers across our city who actually care for our environment and many of them are involved in these projects which are getting funded. There are approximately 1,005, no, 15,000 volunteer hours per year through these projects and it's valued at 645,000 dollars. Also, our koala program is nationally recognised as a leader in preventing the ongoing loss of koalas. And this provides not only benefits to us because we all love seeing the koala and it attracts tourists to our area for that dollar, but it also provides credibility to council's environmental management of projects, including our major projects when talking to outside companies etcetera and state and federal government. We're also looking forward to the RSPCA Wildlife Centre of Excellence Investment, which is being directly attributed to council's environmental programmes and our credentials. And this centre will not only be a valuable asset for wildlife, but a fantastic tourism attraction, building our local economy. I'd also like to give a shout out to, well, Graeme's in here, but all, all the team. They're amazing what they do and we all love living here. And our house values, as we've just spoken about, are high because of our beautiful area. But we really cannot underestimate the importance of our environment to our local economy and our lifestyles. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Boglari. I now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Rendles, I can't see. So those for councillor Boglari, councillor Peter Mitchell, councillor Goll, sorry, not councillor Goll, councillor Hewlett, deputy mayor, no, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop and myself. And those against councillor Goll, councillor Rendles and councillor, and deputy mayor Talty. Motion's carried. Thank you. That concludes agenda item number 5.5. Moving on to agenda item number 5.6, the Landfill Remediation Separate Charge, 2024/2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Colley. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to the motion?
I, I would, as I have mentioned in my speech that I've been banging on about this one for years. And I'm, I'm so thankful for the support of officers in, in working with this. In the report, it noted that the council will utilise one-tenth of the amount disclosed on its notes. And that's, I've mentioned again, the 14.68 million. We're going to be using one-tenth this year, but that's because we're looking at the next 10 years. So each year, as we draw down from the funds that we've collected over past years, so we're just blending what we've collected over past years, reducing the landfill remediation separate charge this year and seeing what happens. And over the next 10 years, that stretch of the money balanced instead of seeing those huge spikes when we do a lot of work in particularly this year at Judy Holt. Instead of it being an enormous increase to the separate charge, we're actually seeing a 10 years, we just gentle it out as much as we can. We, we never really know. So thank you to everyone that, when they're looking at this separate charge and when you're out and about remembering that we've got so much landfill remediation across our city. It's a legacy that we have inherited and it's so important with especially amazingly how close to our creeks they are. At Judy Holt, we're this close to the bay. And if any of that leachate gets into the bay, we'll be tied to us and to everyone. It's so important. So there you go. Over 10 years, we'll be drawing down on that 14.68 million. And please note that we have put that saving in this year.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Councillor Bishop?
Yes, if I may through you to, well, I'm not quite sure the relevant officer may be Infrastructure and Operations. Just, we are drawing down on that amount of money for the works that we know that's currently in scope. Just for community assurance, just that, that we are going to be doing ongoing work to look at other areas and, and identify those, just to get some idea on the longer term costs associated. And I think it will be, if I may through you to Chair?
General Manager Infrastructure and Operations?
Thank you Mayor, through you. Thank you councillor Bishop. We have a significant programme of works that we're always looking forwards at our landfill remediations to see what has to happen to keep them into contemporary and, and deliver our environmental duty. So there is work going on every single landfill that we have, 28 of them. So that will continue to happen, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I now put the motion. Those in favour of the officer's recommendation? That's carried unanimously. That concludes agenda item number 5.6. Moving on to agenda item number 5.7, which is Redlands City SES Administration Separate Charge, 2024/2025. Charge 2024-2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Boglari. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. This is setting the fees and charges in support of the Redlands City State Emergency Service this year. I'm just, I'm sure we're all very proud of the Orange Angels, the SES. These volunteers go out and do searches, step into the face of fires and flooded homes and things, when the rest of us are able to hunker down at home and stay safe. So just like to take the opportunity to thank them. The Redlands City State Emergency Service do serve across the state when asked, when called, but it is ratepayers. It is you that funds them. So emphasis on the Redlands City State Emergency Service. Ratepayers are proud to support them and step up and do the bit. But we do again call on the state to help with these services that do serve across the state. And also just say to our community, we support the SES with our funds, and that's great. Please also support them by preparing your homes and properties and yourselves well for natural disasters or other things that are coming up. That's the best way you can support them and keep the fees and charges down. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Are there any other speakers, speakers against? Would you like to make a comment?
If I may, please.
Yes, thank you councillor Boglari.
Oh, thank you. I too would just like to give a shout out to the SES. I can remember one of my first incidences when I got in here was during a storm. One of my house roofs of an elderly couple were blown away, and I rang up our SES people here, not knowing what to do, and they were there and they fixed that roof immediately. And I have remained being impressed for the last 16 years from them. I asked them yesterday for a couple of points. So the Redlands City unit have completed 178 local tasks during the Christmas Eve, Boxing Day and New Year's rain events this year. Members deployed up north to assist the tropical cyclone Jasper in Caralee and deployed to the Gold Coast during the Christmas storm events. Volunteers completed 6,765 hours during only three months. They did that many hours, December to February. First for Lamb Island, which now has an SES vehicle permanently on the island. Cleveland Depot now has a new storage carport structure to secure and protect the vehicles also, which are funded. And importantly, they're actually getting the recognition they deserve. David Fraser won a regional award, and state awards have been won by four of our members. And one of them was, oh, I should say all of them if I'm going to say one, Sidra Hardcourt, Alexandra Baines and Marie Bennett and Tim Willis. And these are some of the young members. How awesome is that? There's a succession plan here, so we're going to remain being safe. And recently, in a Moreton Bay Island to practise navigation event, for the first time in South East Queensland, our guys used drones when launched from flood boats. So they're innovative and they're up there. It's no wonder they're recognised throughout the state. And I think, on behalf of all councillors, I just want to give them a shout out.
Wonderful. Thank you for that local information. That's really good. I would now like to put the motion. Those in favour of the officer's recommendation? Thank you, carried unanimously. And that concludes agenda item number 5.7. Moving on to agenda item number 5.8, Rural Fire Brigade Special Charge 2024-2025, overall plan. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Rendles? Do I have a second, councillor Colley? Councillor Rendles, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, because I think it stands for itself. I will note that the levy is applied to the southern Moreton Bay Islands. But in supporting this, I obviously highlight the value of the rural fire service, but I also link back to comments that were made by councillor Mackenzie in relation to the overall budget. That 2017 were the last fires that went through southern Moreton Bay Island. It was also a period where Stradie caught on fire, and we had fires all down through Mount Cotton. Since that time, the weather's been predominantly wet. And any of us who live in a rural area or enjoy the conservation zones across the area are aware of the amount of fuel load that is increasing. And that is a very, very high concern to my fellow residents on the islands. And I don't think that we should look at this charge and think that the problem's solved. You know, we certainly need to be reviewing. And I note in previous budget discussions that GM Infrastructure and Operations referred to us losing a month's work because of wet weather. So we need to also ensure when we're considering the overall budget, that we step back and through the course of the year, make sure that those fuel load reduction strategies are in place, which may require, you know, temporary or ongoing supplements to outdoor staff within council.
Thank you councillor Rendles. Do I have any speakers against? Thank you. I now put the motion. Those in favour of the officer's recommendation? Thank you, carried unanimously. And that concludes agenda item number 5.8. Moving on to agenda item number 5.9, which is adoption of the budget estimates and fixing of rates and charges 2024-2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Boglari. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Hewlett. Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. I think everybody has said a fair share about the budget. Again, I would like to say that even though, you know, there are parts of any budget in this budget as well, you know, which, you know, we're not happy with, overall, I think we've come together to deliver a budget that is fiscally responsible. And this is quite often my issue, is I don't actually support when we are too low, because I know that that's increasing debt. It's going to put further stress on future residents. Whereas with this budget, I know we have covered what we need. And I know that the CEO and all the officers in the room have spoken to us in great length and councillors in great length have asked question after question to see where we can get improvements, changes, some changes that we've all decided on, we couldn't do in this actual timeframe. I'm delighted, though, that we're all on that same page and that we're moving forward. And like councillor Bishop referred to it, as a transitional budget. And come August, we're even re-evaluating, reviewing, whatever the word is, the CapEx programme. And then we're going to look at the rating categories. So going forward, the issues that some, that have concerns for some of us, we're going to address, and I apologise, we couldn't get it done in this timeframe, but it is going to happen. I think, I don't know, I think we've said it all. It's all there. It's very transparent for anyone who would like to read the budget. And if anyone does have questions, please forward them in, and we'll answer them for you as well. It has got greater transparency with the CapEx book, which I know the community has been asking for, and it's got many positives throughout the detail.
Deputy Mayor Talty?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to please move an amendment to councillor Boglari's motion. And this is a really amendment for noting and acknowledging the timeframes that we've had for getting through all of the information in the budget. This is an amendment to add a point 11 to the overall matters being noted and considered. And just acknowledging that before these additional operating requests move forward, councillors would like to have the opportunity to speak further with the relevant offices and departments and gather more information. So this would form an addendum at the end of the 12 pages of information that are referred to in the motion. So the current motion says that council will move forward with all of these things, and this is not changing that. It's simply noting that we have more or less run out of time and that we would like to continue to review these things over the budget process and quarterly reviews, and noting that these particular items that are noted from A to G in the amendment are matters that councillors would still like to have more information on.
Thank you councillor Talty. Do I have a second for the amendment? Thank you councillor Mitchell. Yeah, so the second was councillor Hewlett? Sorry, councillor Mitchell, sorry, councillor Mitchell. We're just having a moment. Thank you. Councillor Boglari, are you happy for the amendment to be included?
I am happy because this was discussed in a workshop, that some councillors wanted further information, so I'm all for further information.
It's councillor Mitchell. Councillor Mitchell, are you, you're happy? Councillor? Okay, so the motion, the original motion, including the amendment, is now the live motion. So do I have a speaker for? Against, actually, yeah, Julie Tyspin. Councillor Bishop?
Thank you. In speaking against, I'm really just flagging a concern with regards to the process of the, not, actually not so much the process, but some of the details relating to the addition of item 11. Generally, the body, substantive body of the work is significant, and I have no concerns with it because it's the council's process that we've all gone through, which I think has been subject to robust discussion and scrutiny and clarity. I have got some concerns with relation to adding this, and I'd like to just leave it at the high level. I don't support some of these particular choices for scrutinising these further. I believe there should be a separation of powers that we acknowledge and respect for the executive leadership team with the CEO, to allow the executive officers to take care of executive functions. They've come to us and asked for budget requirements substantive to do the things that we're asking them to do strategically in the direction we want to go in. And I'm concerned that some of these maybe could be perceived as us reaching a little further and potentially leaving some residual views for those officers if they do take on those substantive roles. And I've got some concerns about that. So I don't support that. I'm happy to have the ongoing discussion. I appreciate the attempt for transparency, but I've just got some concerns about that. I will support the item, but I just want to flag I've got some concerns about some of these.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Sorry, Bishop. Thank you councillor Bishop. Speaker for? Any other speakers for? Councillor Hewlett?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really see any big issue with adding these. I mean, certain councillors have experienced, have expressed, sorry, concerns about the additional operational request, and it's within the board of directors' right to seek clarification on things they're uncertain about. So I personally support these things, but I'm glad, I'm happy to investigate them further and to get more clarity around each and every position, as pleased as most other councillors. So I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hewlett. Speakers, any other speakers against? No? In that case, yes, councillor Hughes.
I think through yourself, Mayor, to the CEO, potentially, I'm just seeking clarity that these line items that we've highlighted, for those watching online, that we get pages and pages of, obviously running a city to probably the hundreds to maybe a thousand page lines. When we are, and if we endorse the item, and we are endorsing the budget pack 2425, these line items will not progress until we've actually met and had further discussion. Is that right?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment too. As previously, I just want to thank everyone's input. It was really robust during this process, and I want to thank the councillors who are very active in making comment and speaking to not only projects in their own division, but raising questions citywide around things that they may have been concerned about. I think that collective input is very important, and it creates a collegial approach. And I am very appreciative of those who did actually provide input. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councillor Rendles?
It's just a little question. When I was going through the papers, and I went over them a number of times, that RIC is referred to, RIC is one of two separate entities that sits under council. One of them, the mining one, we heard a little while ago, has not been trading and we're closing it down. RIC is a trading one. And I've been struggling to see where it's reflected in the budget. If we go to page 162 of the bound pack, we see on the table of summary of financial statements, a negative cash flow from investment activities. Is that due to RIC still being in a developmental stage and representing a net cost? Or is there some? 162, that in the, in terms of the pagination at the bottom of the booklet. So, yep, that's, it gets a little bit confusing when you're referring to pages. Yeah. That, so it refers a number of times in here. It talks about RIC being an investment body. We can see, we can see on.
Councillor Rendles, it's actually the next agenda item. It's just been pointed out. If you want to hold the question.
Yep, I'll hold the question.
Okay. And so any other questions in relation to 5.9? Councillor Hughes?
Thank you to our CFO, acting CFO, thank you, Michael. When we're looking at page 60, Lizzie, and we've got the rating categories, and we're talking about the minimum general rate value threshold, that's on page 60, I think it's 60 and 60. But then we talk about the 680,000 with the band, within the band. And I think it can get quite confusing for all of us sometimes. Can you explain the minimum general rate value threshold versus the band, that 680,000 of land value? Thank you.
So through you, Mayor, and thank you for the question, councillor Hughes. To answer this question, I might use category 1A and 1B on page 60 that you've just referenced. The $680,000 is used to differentiate the value of land in both categories. The threshold for category 1A is for all properties with a valuation up to $680,000. Where a property exceeds that valuation, so for simplification, I'll say $680,001, that property will then be categorised in category 1B. The column to the far right, which describes the minimum general rate threshold, is for properties with a valuation, and again, I'll use category 1A, the threshold is set, minimum general rate threshold is set at $426,516. Now, that means that a property in category 1A with a valuation up to that amount, $426,516, will only pay the minimum general rate, which is outlined in the third column of this table. So, that minimum general rate is published here at $1,249. Yep, then every property over the 426,516 threshold is subject to the rate in the dollar and that, that applies to the valuation of the property to calculate their rates.
All right. Does that satisfy your question?
It does. In the, in the, it's got the officer's recommendation and in the report we, we've spoken to, to the 680. I just don't know where, where we've mentioned that in the report, the body of the report, Michael. That 680,000 is really relevant to a lot of people to understand that.
You will see that in the revenue statement, which is, it forms a part of the budget publication, which we'll be discussing at another agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much councillors for everyone's input. I will now go back to councillor Boglari. You have a question councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you mayor. Just relating somewhat between 5.4 and although before we adopt 5.9, on, there has been a recognition that we will be looking at the review of the differential rating categories. Just an indication from the organisation on any timing without being too precise. Is that likely to start within this first quarter of the financial year? Just to make sure that we have sufficient time for a robust review, but important in adopting the budget today. Is there an indication of when that work might be able to get started and intention to get going on that review? Particularly relating to the differential rate reviews of 5.4, but that is important, of course, in the setting of today's rates.
Through you mayor, we start the process almost straight away. And so, we're in council's hands. We will talk to councillors about timing for workshops and discussions about that. But we virtually start this process straight away and with a full council, now with new councillors. We're in your hands, but we certainly will, will be starting that this calendar year so that we start those conversations well in advance of Christmas. I think suggests we can let this budget get through, settle, and then we can get on with it in the next couple of months, you know, at least an initial conversation.
Thank you very much. Happy with that.
All right. Thank you.
Through you mayor, sorry, if I could just maybe answer councillor Rendell's question that came up a little bit earlier. Just wanted to clarify, your question was about RIC's financials. You might be aware that we, they are a separate company, they're separate to us. They're not actually specifically included in these financials. They do their own budgets, they do their own reporting in through our audit and risk management committee. So, you, you will see lines through on the balance sheet, but they're not, we're not moving items specifically related to RIC.
No, I understand that and the issue runs across 5.9 and 5.10.
It does, it does.
And my question really was that if, if, where, even though they run their own, their own budget, they run their own balance sheet and they report that, you would expect to see a line item either in the cash that they're coming in, is their dividend payments, or the expenses that are going out because the expenses exceed their cash input. And that's what I'm struggling to see in which item is here. There's a lot of detail for everything else. There's mentioned numerous times about RIC being separate and paying dividends, but I can't see that as a line item in any of the material here.
We will take that specific question on notice.
I'm happy to jump in councillor through you mayor as well. So, I think probably a key part to that councillor is to recognise that a few years ago, RIC went through a transition plan, it's agreed through this council. At the moment, their remit is solely to deliver three projects, Redland City Council funded projects, which is the Wyonam Creek project, the Kapalava redevelopment and the Toon to Harbour project. So, in essence, what you're not, why you're not seeing money with a RIC name to it is because it's actually money which is going to those three projects that council then uses to fund RIC to deliver those projects. So, there'll be an element of capital that goes to them. So, as an example, there's $5.6 million in this year's capital programme when you, if, should you adopt it, that would go to fund the Wyonam Creek project. That money would go to RIC for them to then go and spend to deliver that programme, but that's ultimately funded through the capital programme and line itemed into the Wyonam Creek project. There'll be elements of OpEx in that for them to do that as well. Those will probably be sitting in the AMP department and roll through as part of our larger, major projects bundle. So, you won't see specific line items to RIC because they're actually funded, I guess, in a project sense. In a simplistic language, Redland City Council is almost subcontracting the delivery of those projects to the Redlands Investment Corp, which is why you wouldn't see them line item named. And that's probably the easiest description of why they're not in the budget itself.
So, jump, jumping to 10, if I may, on, on the table on page 162.
So, councillor Rendles, sorry, we have to keep to order of the agenda.
And through you chair, if I could just add as well, I think this might help you councillor Rendles. So, we're still on attachment, so item 5.9, attachment 1, so we're on page 86 of your meeting papers. Page 18 of the actual document is obviously our balance sheet, our statement of financial position. If you have a look under our non-current assets, you'll see this investment in other entities. I think that's the line item that you're actually looking for that relates to our investment in RIC. Thank you chair, I think that's resolved that question.
All right. Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you very much everyone. And again, thank you for all of your input councillor Boglari. I'd like to hand back to you. Would you like to sum up? No? All right. Thank you very much. All right. I would now like to put the motion, those in favour of the officer's recommendation. Councillor Boglari, councillor, councillor Hewlett, councillor Bishop, any other, deputy mayor Tulty, councillor Colley? Sorry, with the amendment? Yeah, so the motion is with the inclusion of the amendment, sorry. So, we've got councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop, deputy mayor Tulty and myself. Oh, and now we've got some more takers. Okay. Sorry, I'll just go back again. Councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, deputy mayor Tulty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop and myself. Those against councillor Gollay. The motion is carried. That concludes agenda item number 5.9. Moving on to agenda item number 5.10, the financial strategy 2024 to 2034. Can I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Boglari. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Briefly mayor, thank you very much. The financial strategy is a 10-year forecast, so it's, I don't want to downplay it by calling it crystal ball gazing, but there are so many moving parts that every year council has to review the long-term financial strategy. You'll see in the background the large number of inputs that go into formulating the financial strategy, but along with the budget, which is an annual forecast at a point in time. This financial strategy is the 10-year look ahead at a point in time. So, really important to look at the two together. And we've spoken a lot about council's very high regard for fiscal hygiene and strategy over time. This is where you can deep dive into that and I've got great confidence that we look ahead better than other levels of government, I believe, and keep our city in great shape. And this is one of those key strategic documents for the community to look at. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Are there any, are there any speakers against? And question by, or comment by councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just a comment, just acknowledging the great work that the portfolio management officers are doing and aligning in with Chris Isles's team, looking at the 10-year capex. I'm really grateful for the language regarding the, what is loaded in to that capex and what is not loaded in. Really looking forward to getting greater clarity for our financial strategy and our collective planning as we run everything through that, the filter to make sure that each project is considered through that lens as we, as we load that in and get ready for the expectations for delivery over the next 10 years and funding beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Boglari?
Just a comment. It's been said a couple of times in this meeting how everything goes back to the corporate plan and so does the financial strategy. So, councillors give a direction through the, through the corporate plan and then our, our staff have to manage that and work out how to sustainably deliver those projects, whether it's through the debt or the grants or, you know, future rates or cash balances. And the financial strategy is how that's all set out and you can see it for future years. So, as I mentioned earlier, when the corporate plan comes up for a revision later this year, it's really important that everyone gets involved, including all the community groups, because that's the vision and that's what's going to set all these documents. It's that corporate plan, it's the big umbrella over everything. And I just want to stress the importance of that.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Councillor Rendles?
Sorry, I'm a bit like a dog with a bone on this one. That, the parking at Wyonam Creek is one of the biggest single issues for the southern Moreton Bay Islands. And I am really endeavouring to get an understanding of the money flow around this, putting aside RIC as being a separate entity. We're getting funny money coming into the situation. We're getting state government commitments in, you know, money might be there, it might not be there, it's given, it's not given, inflated property values. So, on page 86 that was referred to, it was $11.4 million in, in, paid. When I talk about the pages, I'm talking about the total booklet page. So, we're back, yeah, page 86. So, we're back in 5.9 land, land again. Yep. And I think the reference was made to, was it there? Was it there? You told me. Yeah, investment in other, just above top non-current assets. Budget year 1, 2425, an investment of $11.4 million. So, page 86, midway down that table, second column, just above the second purple line, 11,000,350 in our other entities. Then when we jump to page 162, which is in the next, next section, the table, their outputs from long-term financial forecast, we've got a cash flow from investment activities going out of 96.5 million dollars. And, you know, is, is it fair for me when I'm looking at this to be assuming that that 11.4 is a subset of the 96 or RIC takes up a higher portion of that? I'm happy to put this on notice because I think it is critically important that we really understand the money coming into RIC, the dividend that's being realised, the impact of the appreciating value of the land on the level of development, what's coming in in terms of, from the state in the election promises that are flowing through. So that when we look at what is being delivered by the developer, when we finally see that, we've got some sound financial basis to see whether we're getting value for our dollars.
Acting CFO?
Thank you. And thank you councillor, sorry, through you chair, and thank you councillor Rendles for the question. I just wanted to firstly clarify that the summary of cash flows on page 162 is further expanded in the actual cash flow statement on page 205. Yeah, 205. So, that's the page 205 of the document. We can draw our attention to cash flows from investing activities and each of the line items that, that comprise that summary amount are listed here. So, we're talking about the investment in infrastructure, that is the, the capital plan. We talk to investments in intangible assets. We talk about revenues that we receive for selling our equipment. We talk about capital grants and subsidies and then other cash flows from investing activities. That's just to provide context to the summary page that has been discussed through this question on page 82. The long-term financial plan forecasts what we know to be probable over the long-term plan, so that is the 10 years. We can't forecast with certainty what those dividends will be for RIC, if any, so they are excluded from the long-term financial plan.
All right councillor Rendles, I've just been advised that we can give you a separate brief offline in relation to that. Councillor?
Just a comment in support of councillor Rendles. A number of us have concerns about RIC and therefore the modelling got changed. And that greater transparency about their projects and dividends back to council has always been questioned and followed. And if you are going to get a briefing which was just offered, I, I think it would be worthwhile for all councillors to, to be in that and make it a council-wide one. And I support you in following up that information.
I'd also like to make a comment in, in support as well. I'm definitely very interested in further information about RIC's operation and, yeah, and future. Yes, and briefing to council, that would be great. So, councillor Mitchell, would you like to sum up?
Thank you. And thanks everyone for the questions. Probably just expressed again the amount of information that is available through council. And if you ask a question, the next level of information can come and the one after that and the one after that. So, you cannot possibly put everything in any one document. Otherwise, we would be denuding the trees across the country as a result. The, there was also fairly extensive comments on Redlands Investment Corp. There are put in a vote of great confidence in what I've seen from Redlands Investment Corp. Council has set what RIC does and doesn't do and has not requested it be a profitable dividend returning company in history. So, I think we absolutely, let's have a good look. But I heard those comments and I'm thinking, let's be fair in our comments. We, we have set the direction and I, and I for one believe that's occurring. But this isn't a discussion about RIC, it's about the financial strategy. So, I, I think enough's been said. I'm really comfortable and confident in how council goes about its finances and happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. I'd now like to put the motion, those in favour of the officer's recommendation. Thank you carried unanimously. Sorry, sorry, no. So, that is those in fa, those in favour are councillor Boglari, Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, deputy mayor Tulty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop and myself. Those against councillor Gollay. That concludes agenda item number 5.10. Moving on to agenda item number 5.11, which is adoption of due date period for 202425, quarterly rating. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Hughes. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to the motion?
I've spoken to this on several years. It's, it's February which is the hardest one. We have the excitement of Christmas, the excitement in January of the, the kids going back to school, all of that. And then everybody settles down and then the rates come in. So, if, when you're doing your budgeting and we've talked about that in general meeting, to look at plans and, and payment plans and contact our finance team. But here we go, we've got the four quarters and we've consistently held that four-quarter payment regime. So, there's no change there. And for all the families, February is it.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just for anyone who is listening, just acknowledging that if you have any concerns, please do reach out to the officers if you have got concerns in paying. And, and also that you can pay via bank BSB, which is fee-free and it's highly encouraged for people, BPay, sorry. BPay is, is the best way to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Hughes?
Thank you. Just a question. We did discuss it and touched lightly on it. We're still accepting cash-
We're still accepting cash payment for our rates downstairs. Is that true, correct? Thank you. We haven't?
Through you Chair, answer the question. I believe so councillor Hughes. I can answer that.
Is it our indigenous scape that we've, sorry? And the nursery, that there's no?
Yes councillor, we are receiving those by cash downstairs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Goodo. BPay is great, cash is king. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Gole?
Thank you, Mayor. Just focusing on some of the statements that councillor Hughes just made. It is that critical point in time when people are in that position of going back to school, where they're purchasing their school books, uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. And then they get hit with a rate notice. I think it's highly impacting on our community. And I think we do need to, I can't support this particular recommendation until we do a proper structured review based on benchmarking from other councils. Because again, it comes back to the impact on the community as they're going back to school and they've got a lot of stressors on them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gole. CEO, do you want to make a comment?
Well, through you Mayor, we have done a review and we have spoken to councillors about it. This is about cash flow for the organisation for the city to run effectively, which is why we need to adopt the rates, due date periods and get the quarterly rating started.
Thank you councillor. Anyone else had a comment? Sorry councillor Mitchell?
Just seeing there were those comments, question through to the CEO. Also believe the organisation or every resident can do part payment over monthly to help with their budgeting. So you can choose your own adventure to assist your own household budget.
All right councillor Hughes, did you have anything to sum up?
Okay.
Thanks Mayor. Through you to the CEO and the colleagues who spoke up saying we've already had a review. Does this mitigate the fact that we can't have another review in the future? Thank you. So the answer is no, we can have another review if need be.
Councillor Hughes, did you want to sum up?
I did. In all faith, care and support to our community, we have an enormous finance team of great heart. Please reach out. Do not leave it too late if you are struggling. Reach out immediately. We did, I did speak to this at our last general meeting when we were looking at our policies. And I've been greatly concerned about our hardship policy. Don't wait for hardship policy. Please, reach out. We've got our Michael and an enormous team over there to help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Hughes and councillor Bishop and everyone that outlined alternatives and options for payment for rates. So I greatly appreciate that. All right, I'd now like to put the motion, those in favour of the councillor's recommendation. We have councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, deputy mayor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop and myself. Those against councillor Gole. That concludes agenda item number 5.11, 5.11. We move on to agenda item number 5.12, which is the operational plan 2024-2025. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Hewlett. Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh yes, thanks. This is a very exciting one. If anyone's ever had a look through a operational plan, there is just so much info in it and it really probably shows where your rate dollars go. I haven't got all the pages listed here, but tourism, we're getting a new visitor information centre, which I know councillor Mitchell's very happy about, just across the road. He mentioned it before, it's going to be open with displays on planning and everything. So it's going to be a fantastic new centre. Sports is mentioned. We're getting a new sports planner role to implement the citywide sports strategy. We all know that we want to meet our current and future needs because the demand has certainly grown over the last few years. That's in there. Safety is also mentioned under the stronger community strategy and action plan on page 10. The OpEx plan again reflects the corporate plan, like I said before, and it has the seven key themes. So these are just some of those themes. Under active transport, there's a couple of pages on it, but I'm happy to see the Northern Greenway progressing and also the Moreton Bay Cycleway being designed through Ormiston. There's many environmental projects as well. And I was just trying to remember the page and it's mentioning the city plan. And if anyone can remember back to 2018, the amount of work we did for the four or five years before that to get to the city plan. It's a lot of work and a lot of community consultation. So that's the blueprint for future development and that's getting started. So I want to make sure residents are staying tuned for that. And then something else which is important to me because over the years I've certainly learnt the value of our city water and waste. And they're two commercial businesses that come under this annual OpEx. On page 42 of 68 in the budgeted agenda, what the undertakings of these businesses do is all listed there. And like I said before, the impact of COVID really brought it home to me how lucky we are to live in Redlands because when I had to stay at home, I had water and a flushing toilet, which a lot of people around the world didn't. And so the health of our city really does depend on these. And I'm pleased to see in there is the mention of the new water and wastewater infrastructure asset management. So they're going to support the business through the development of a treatment plant strategy and master plan to make sure the, oh, help me out. What is it, $1.3 billion worth of assets, I think, if I add these up quickly in my head? Or it might be a little bit more. So that's a lot of assets and a lot of management. And I'd like to commend the team that looks after all of that. And I'm really happy to see that's also included. So every single aspect of council is covered in this OpEx plan and I would urge, encourage residents to read it. And you'll definitely see that variety of work that council does that the CEO mentioned previously.
Thank you very much councillor Boglari. Are there any speakers against?
Sorry councillor Boglari, you just mentioned, no, you just mentioned the OpEx plan, so that's the operational plan versus the OpEx?
Oh, operational plan, I meant.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Because I think we can?
I think I said the OpEx plan.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers against? Any speakers against? Yeah, I'll just go, I'll just go. You might inform whether you speak against. Okay councillor Rendles, you can ask a question.
Thank you. I'd just like some clarification as to the degree to which the operational plan is a living document and the degree to which it is set. Part of the reason I ask that is that it has some combination of broad strategy and direction with catalyst projects, but at some other areas, it actually includes specific additional operating expenditure. So is it fair to impute that if something's not included in there as an additional operating expenditure, that it doesn't get a look in? So for example, that the, there's no funding for the chambers of commerce on either islands, on Stradie or the Simbi, but they've identified for the mainland. There's no allocation for local leads of Simbi infrastructure planning, whereas there is for mainland ones. I've got a question too in respect to key initiative four on page 223. Who are the Redlands Coast Island Working Group? It's not, it's not a group or individuals that I'm aware of. So I'm happy to put those on notice, provided that we can, as we go through the process of meetings over the forthcoming months, that we can revisit those as part of general business.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you councillor Rendles.
Through you Mayor. Thanks councillor Rendles for the question. It is a living document. And so there are opportunities for council to ask questions and refine, change that document as we go. So what we'll do is we'll take those questions on notice and bring them back to all councillors. Our strategy through this whole process has been to, when we've had questions, is to try to circulate the answers to everybody. And I think that's been really helpful today and we'll do the same.
Thank you councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, a question to the general manager of community and customer services. Took on community safety, which is something council are certainly needing to buy into. My question relates specifically to the very welcome investment this year, $95,000 for the development of Redlands Coast Community Safety Action Plan and the strategic and documented approaches that will come from that. My question is, council is not the police, but our community does expect us more than ever to assist and spend money virtues like our temporary security cameras, our quarterly meetings with police and community forums. How might the strategy support council in making sure any money that we do spend, which is essentially policing work or from state government responsibilities, how might it support council in ensuring we spend the right money in the right places? And how we might also advocate better to our state members for greater support for our community?
Through you Mayor. Thank you councillor Mitchell for the question and also for your high level of involvement and understanding of community safety. You're quite right, the stronger community strategy sets the strategic framework for what we do in the community space. And this year, we're really pleased that we'll be able to launch a community safety action plan, which is an outworking from that higher-level strategic document that sets the forward vision for us. That document will allow us to be able to communicate clearly different roles of different entities. You're quite right, there is a confusion within the community that council is responsible for things that are actually the responsibility of other levels of government. So we'll be able to identify clearly and use that for advocacy to enhance community safety opportunities within the city. But community safety is not just a camera and it's not just a policing initiative. It is about community education, like our Tech Savvy forum that was also an initiative that came out of the work with the Queensland Police Service. And it is also things like vegetation clearing, September initiatives in design and how we do our infrastructure planning. So thank you for the question. I think this document will help us establish some of that clarity and advocacy moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Gole?
Thank you Mayor. Through you to the CEO. The operational plan, it's always available to the public to view. And that includes previous budgets. It's always been available. So it's a matter of transparency for the people listening at home. That plan is always available and it has been in the past. By all means, please get on board, have a look at it. Cheers.
Thank you councillor Bishop.
I appreciate this is relating to the operational plan. Going forward, it relates to the corporate plan. And I think as we review that document and I think other councillors have questions that come up, I think it's also very important that we find ways to check in with our community on matters of priority to them. I'd just like to flag that at this point, noting this is the operational plan. But that's part of what will make the budget deliberations easier and more consistent for us all in future. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Boglari, would you like to sum up?
No, I just ditto what everyone has said. It's a great lot of work in there and residents should have, get a copy and have a look.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. And now put the motion, those in favour of the officer's recommendation. Carried unanimously. I would like to thank everyone for their attendance today. Thank you councillors for your input. Thank you very much to the CEO and the executive leadership team and the organisation for the work done in relation to delivering this year's budget. I acknowledge as we have throughout this meeting that it was a very time-pressed process. So I really do want to thank everyone involved and everyone's patience in getting us through to this point. To the community, thank you very much for your input. I realise that any announcements like this create a lot of dialogue. We have done our best for you. I encourage you, like we've just said, to go through every piece of information available. And as councillor Boglari said, if you have any questions, really do get in touch with us so we can explain things or provide further information if need be. Councillors, please ensure your attendance has been logged in diligence boards, in diligent boards. Should keep talking. So I hope that the, I hope that the information that everyone listened to, if you're listening online today, proved very, very informative. There is an awful lot online, available on council's website through various links and you will be able to find out a lot more information. As we've noted, you have a lot more information in the annual capital works programme as well and we encourage everyone to get online and have a look at that document. I'd like to declare this meeting closed at 12:26pm. Thank you.